Keeping that truck in shape, keeping that truck in shape. I'll bring it up to the crew then. Have one more this year. Yeah, second Saturday and not COVID. It starts at four o'clock, so usually people there about four to six, so people don't stay around way long like they used to. Yeah, let's see it. Only time I can see it's Crystal's parade.
We need better sound up there now.
Yeah. Yeah, if there were just maybe a couple more microphones around the jury box there, it might help. I don't think so. We have a terrible time there hearing anything on those committee meetings. Uh, I, I hope that there's something that you can do about that. Yeah, yeah, if there were a few microphones like they have here, of course, this is all integrated, but if there could be some that could be just set out and hooked into a system. Yeah. Yeah. So, those.
Everybody's been saying a lot about that.
Yeah. But that, but the, yeah, the room in the new building, you'd have, you'd have to have microphones for sure because those committee meetings, it's hard to hear. Especially if one of the chairman talks real low, then it's hard to know exactly what they're even, yeah, what they're even talking about.
No, the, the new building, when we've done committee meetings up there, you can hardly hear. It's actually worse than going out. No, no, it's just, it's just an empty room, just a big room. Uh, like, uh, they were saying, they had planned on having an actual conference room, but it ended up getting cut out.
Yeah. 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 Really, uh, I, the, the way that the courthouse is set up really is better where that the people who come in can see y'all sitting there. Because if you have, have a set, setup like this where you're around the table or something like that, some, with some of them to the backs to them, if you ever have any real controversial things. Yeah. 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 Been a while.
At six thirty, before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to welcome our three new board members, Mr. James Klaus over here, then Ms. Ashley Carr and Ms. Shirley Myers. Welcome.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. The opening session prayer, we give them a Rick Dodson Pledge of Allegiance by Mitch Stonecifer.
Let us pray. Holy Ghost is having a follow. We thank this great night. You give us followings, ask tonight that Lord you lead, guide, and direct us in every decision we make for the, the children and the teachers and everybody's involved in Oak County School System. Father, we just ask you to watch over and keep us safe this night. Father, we say you give us more than a billion. In Jesus' name we pray.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, approval of the minutes from the August ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting. I'm entertaining motion.
I like that motion.
Motion by Rick Dodson, second. Second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Number five, any additions or deletions to the proposed agenda? I hear none, so we'll move on to six. Approval of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda. Motion by Wayne Taylor, second by Darman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Under executive action, we'll go through all these and we'll vote on them all at one time. Approval of the following low bids for toner for N and L business systems. I'm not going to go through those descriptions and prices, you can look at those there. Number two, approved bid for pest control at hall buildings for Universal Pest Control for nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Number three, approve the following low bids for bus tires and recapping from Highway Tire. Description, three hundred and eighty-one for the radial with rock, one seventy-five for the recapping eleven hundred, twenty-two point five. Number four, approve the following low bids. Again, if anybody wants a copy of this, I'm not going to go through that one by one, but you can see all the antifreeze, the oil, the batteries, fuel filters, all of those were from NAPA. Number five, approved low bid of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, five gallon from Empire Industries for grain and enzyme treatment. Number six, approve low bid for three hundred and seven Microsoft three sixty-five A three subscription licenses from CDWG for sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Number seven, approve low bid for Surface Scale three tablets from Microsoft for ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Number eight, approve low bid for Surface Go top covers from CDWG for eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Number nine, approve low bid for Gundrop Surface Go three cases from CDWG for five thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And number ten, approve low bid for Surface Classroom pins from S H I for five thousand thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve all those little, motion by James Klaus.
Second.
Second by Miss Alice Reed. We had a roll call. I've been in money, so go ahead and roll call.
Sure. Oh, sorry.
The process subjects to change, does it, if tires go up or go down, or?
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions?
William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Darman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
All in favor, zero opposed, motion passes.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Again, we'll cover these and take it with motion. Number one, letters of resignation from the following Catherine Gore, Donna Lamb, and Susanna Owens. Those letters were in your packet. Number two, the quarterly reports. Number three, fiscal year twenty-three ESR planning grant, original budget. Number four, fiscal year twenty-three ESR two-point-oh grant, original budget. Number five, fiscal year twenty-three CTE Perkins Basic Revision One. Number six, fiscal year twenty-three CTE Perkins Basic Revision Number Two. Number seven, fiscal year twenty-three Math Implementation Support Grant, original budget. Number eight, fiscal year twenty-three Math Implementation Support Grant Revision One. Number nine, fiscal year twenty-three ELC Grant, Original Budget. Number ten, Livingston Academy Volleyball Trip to Orlando, Florida to play in a tournament August thirtieth of twenty-three through September the third of twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mitch Stonecifer. Second, second by Miss Shirley Myers, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Under new business, number one, appoint twenty-two, twenty-three board chairman and twenty-two, twenty-three vice board chairman. This was brought up, uh, a couple of different meetings. We talked about leaving the same in place this year. A couple of reasons, we got new folks on the board, plus we got the football building project, we're about to start the school building program. So Crystal and I talked, we had discussed as a board, instead of going through and changing policy, because the policy states that every year it'll rotate to the next district. Unless those board members can agree, then we'll go on to the next district. So without changing our policy, the simplest way would be to go through each district, and if you want to pass and bring back the district one to keep the chairman this year, then so be we. Leave it that way and not have to change policy. So, District Two.
I pass.
I pass also.
All right, District Three.
I pass.
I pass.
District Four.
I pass.
I respectfully.
District Five.
I pass.
So it'll come back, so I'll be the chairman this year. Miss Shirley, you can be the vice chairman.
Great.
Welcome.
Excuse me, I can vote for that.
That's like.
That's a trick.
Somebody wants, I'll be here. Somebody wants that, I'll take it if the chairman don't miss a meeting, so, uh, but, uh, but we, we need to vote on that, Crystal, anyway. So let's, let's go ahead and vote on that. So I entertain a motion to keep it.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Miss Alice Reed, second, second by Wayne Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Congratulations, sir.
I'd just for direct, I'd like to say in, uh, in accordance with our policy, our requirements, I've shown each district.
Yes, and that's why I want to.
And we will continue in District Two next year.
Absolutely. Next September, we'll go to District Two, just like we did.
Sure.
Uh, number two, appoint the twenty-two, twenty-three Tennessee Legislative Network Representative. I'll take nominations for the.
I nominate Ashley.
Second. So we got a nomination for Miss Ashley Carr, and we have a second by Wayne Taylor.
We got the national nomination.
So we got, is that the only nomination? All right, so we got a motion on the floor, so, uh, Ashley Carr for the Tennessee Legislative Network, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Ashley.
Yeah, we seem to be lucky down in this.
Number three, consider approval for A H Roberts to replace old playground equipment. That'll be funded by the COVID loss allocation, PTO and fund rate. So I'll entertain a motion to, a motion by James Klaus. Second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval of Board Policy five point one-one-three in-service and professional learning opportunities. That was in your packet as well. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Rick Dodson. Second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Consider approval to hire J R O T C officer and J R O T C non-commissioned officer. So before I take a motion, so talk to Miss Mandy Looper, she's had that up at the high school. It appears that, um, we are gonna, we have approval, it appears that August of twenty-three, our next school year, then we should be ready to go with our J R O T C program at the high school. Uh, so I talked to Dr. Holman, since the board has to fund half that salary, I wanted to go ahead and approve that, that way, when the timing comes, uh, whether it's next month or three months from now, they want to go ahead and hire the officer and the non-commissioned officers, start getting ready, then they have that approval, uh, to start that program.
Do you remember how much we have budgeted for that?
Uh, it, it probably will not hit till our twenty-three, twenty-four budget, because it's not gonna.
So it'll be set for the.
It'll be set for that, and it's roughly fifty thousand dollars total, I think it's about twenty-five each, uh, that the Army pays the other half. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by Miss Alice Reed, any other discussion? Now, since those are new positions and expending money, uh, take a roll call.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Darman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ten-four, zero, opposed, motion passes.
Item number six, consider approval to increase school board meeting compensation rates. This is something that was brought up by, uh, Miss Connie from the county. Uh, they had their increases as well for the county commissioners, and the county is budgeting for the school board increase. Uh, this is in your packet also. Currently, uh, for a scheduled meeting, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars, that new rate will go to two hundred per meeting. A work session's currently forty, it will go up ten dollars to fifty. Uh, the board chairs from one fifteen to one twenty-five, and the board secretary's from seventy-five to two, I'm sorry, seventy-five to one hundred. Uh, so it's twenty-five dollars a meeting there, so based on, uh, you know, the county's approval that they budgeted for, uh, and, uh, Miss Connie, you know, giving us that recommendation, that was a recommendation from, from her. I'll entertain a motion to increase those rates. Motion by Darman Hicks. Second by Miss Ashley Carr, any discussion?
This is what does consistent with other communities that's.
Correct, so the county commission, uh, Crystal, correct if I'm wrong, they get two hundred a meeting? They get two fifty a meeting? Yeah. Two fifty a meeting.
Meeting on the county and honor on the committee.
If you're a committee, you get a hundred for that, so.
And the school board cannot get more than they will.
Yeah, we can't.
They have to settle all that.
Am I correct? Any other discussion? Let's roll call that, and Crystal's in.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Darman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten-four, zero, opposed, motion passes.
Number seven, uh, consider approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three ESR three-point-oh public plan for remaining funds. Uh, this was in your packet as well. Uh, this is just a breakdown of the ESR three funds. I'll let Dr. Holman speak to that. It's just a breakdown of what Teresa had to submit to the state as far as their ESR three funds. You know, going by ESR two, we still got to June twenty-twenty-three to spend those, then ESR three, we've got to June twenty-twenty-four to spend those as well. But then just a breakdown for everybody to know as far as, you know, the educators and foundations and academics, what portion is going to that from ESR three. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Miss Alice Reed, second by William Abston, any discussion?
Just, you said twenty-twenty-three, we're still on two-point-oh, right?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-three is two-point-oh. The, uh, three-point-oh, we have until June of twenty-four. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number eight, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-one general purpose school revision one. Uh, that was attached with seven. Crystal, I'll be on that one there. Is that the newest one you had? The G P revision?
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's a little colored on it.
Okay.
And on that, that budget amendment was, uh, the first, uh, general purpose school budget amendment this year for one forty-one, and the yellow highlights, that's just kind of for my references. Uh, if you look, there is some very pale blue highlights on a few of these, and the only things that is in this amendment is simply, uh, when we built the first amendment back in, or the first budget back in May for this year, we did not know for certain that we were going to get salary equity funding and that that was continuing. Uh, but we did confirm that, and so this just moves that salary equity funding into the correct categories, um, as opposed to where we just put it in as a whole at the moment. Uh, and then there was one more change, which is in category seven-three-three-zero-zero, and that was just to budget the, uh, seven-three-three-zero-zero is for the after-school programs. And it was moving funding from the code one-eighty-nine other salaries and wages to one-forty-six bus drivers, which would be the correct, uh, category that they should be listed in. We was just trying to tidy those up. So that was the only changes in this first budget amendment.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Miss Shirley Myers, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, special recognition, Wilson Elementary.
This is a good day on this table. Uh, the principals and I, we have, we have goals that are, the school system has all kinds of goals, we have goals for everything. But as a group of administrators, uh, our goal has always been to be a reward school. Every school wants to be a reward school. When you, when you look at the criteria of what a reward school is, uh, it looks at three areas. One is academic achievement, the other is academic growth, and the last one is attendance or chronic absenteeism. So they have to, there's a, there's a, a heat map that, uh, these scores are, uh, loaded into, and it tallies up. The maximum you can make out of that is a four. Uh, and all the principals know that the magic number is three-point-one, three-point-one, so. Thankfully, and we are so thankful and happy that Wilson Elementary scored a three-point-one, uh, and we've got other schools in our district that were close also, and we're really, we're happy, we're proud for all of our schools. But, uh, tonight is Wilson Elementary's night, uh, and we're, and I could not be more happy, uh, of a group of educators and staff. We have many educators and several staff members here as well, and let me say this real quick, it takes every one of us in the building to be successful. Everybody in the building plays a vital role in making that school successful, uh, and this is a good example of that. I, I really like, uh, the reward school scenarios, and, and I'm very tickled, I think you can tell, I'm a little excited about this tonight. This is something, and I've already told Miss Fisher and all the principals today, that next year I hope that we have, uh, I hope there's This is something, and I've already told Ms. Fisher and all the principals today, that next year I hope that we have, uh, I hope there's teachers out in the hall, we have so many, uh, rewards, I hope that we don't have room for them all. Because that, what that does, in my opinion, everyone, is that shows that a school is well-rounded. They're doing, they're doing good at pretty well every facet of a student's education. Before we get, I'd like to get a picture of everyone. But before we do that, I'd like for, uh, uh, each one of the people to, uh, just tell us who you are and what you do at the school. We'll start with Ms. Ashley.
I'll go first. Do you understand?
Yes, stand.
It's hard to see me, but I'm Ms. Fisher, I'm the proud principal of Wilson Elementary. And, uh, I want to say thank you, Dr. Holman and board members, for this reception, uh, and thank you for your outpouring love and support, especially your Dr. Holman of Wilson Elementary. Back when Dr. Holman was the principal at Rickman, me and him and some other principals, we had like a little bit of competition of who's going to be a reward school and who's not, and, um, it was a friendly competition, but, uh...
We called it hill.
Yes. We were always proud for each other, but, uh, you know, Dr. Holman knows that my goal, and my faculty and support staff knows, our goal was always to be a reward school. And I'm truly proud of everyone, it takes all of us. Um, we have high expectations for our students, we love our students, but we also love each other. So, uh, I'm truly, truly proud, and again, I'm Ms. Fisher.
Ms. Fisher, one analogy that I've made is, this is like winning the state tournament for academics, so...
And that's how I, I explained it to people, I was like, this is my state championship, so...
You, you don't have a ring, but you've got that band.
Exactly, and I did not, uh, we're gonna display it, and, and our kids are excited, we're gonna be celebrating as well.
And we have joked that Ms. Fisher probably took this letter from the commissioner, blew it up to poster size, and it's hanging in her house right now. We're, we're really ticked.
Thank you.
I'm Heather Baumann.
Stand up, Miss Baumann.
I'm Heather Baumann, I do title and testing.
Always.
Always.
This Watson girl.
She didn't watch out for you six math. Saunders, I'm a pre-teacher.
Jimmy Miller, I'm pre-k assistant.
Uh, Philip Baumman, computer and R P I.
Deborah's control attendance.
Sarah Jones, third grade.
Amy Leford, cafeteria manager.
Anna Dishman, cook.
Tavith Sniff, first grade.
Olivia Bay, four through six, science and social studies.
Brittany Ray, uh, four through six, E L A.
Sean Kivon, I'm the academic director.
Mariah Appes, I'm a school nurse.
Jamie Ray, I'm second grade.
Sabrina Lyon, I'm seventh ninth, math and science.
Katrina Swallows.
Cook.
I'm Alan Natcher, I'm the school resource officer. Baby, couldn't be more proud of you. You all come up, and we're gonna organize somewhere or other for a picture.
We're gonna have to sound together, I'd like to clap each other.
Smile, darling.
Ten, two, three, ladies.
Or each other.
All right.
Okay, yeah, so three, one, two, three, one, two, three, let me get one of them up, one, two, three.
I want this on the front page.
I said, I want this on the front page.
Next, under special recognition, O C A, Ms. Jennifer Allen.
Well, y'all left me a tough act to follow for them. Uh, I have a couple of things to bring to your attention that are concerns at the legislative level. One has to do with the cataloging of the books, the way the law is read, it's required that all the books, the materials in the library be cataloged and published on the website, and there's some controversies to whether that applies to teachers' private libraries or not. So that's something we're keeping our eye on, because that's going to affect most of our elementary teachers and a lot of our high school teachers in the county. If we had cataloged that, I've heard a lot of teachers say, I'll just take mine home, and that's a shame. Uh, people from the legislature have voiced that that was not the intent of the law, and there is hope at this point that when they go back into session in January, they will clarify the extent, the intent of the law, and maybe hone the law a little bit so that it takes the pressure off the classroom teacher. The other area of concern legislatively has to do with that law with about third grade retention, and how murky the water is around testing, and that too is hopefully going to be revisited when they go back into session. So I know you will anxiously watch along with us, hoping for some relief on those legislative decisions that really didn't take teachers and students into consideration very much. All right, after the day is, uh, good stuff, congratulations to Wilson, and welcome to the new board members from O C A. And we'd like to express our continued appreciation for our ex, eh, continuing board members. I hated to say the old guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. And everybody's got a copy of the director's report you packed as well, so. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to Rick Dodson, second by Jarman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Vote. Everybody good just going on in the work session?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, item number one on the work session, thank you all, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you all, John, congratulations.
Item number one, uh, safety update. So I don't know if Dr. Holman's got anything to do with that. So from the safety update aspect, Dr. Holman said they're still working on the same things that we talked about the last couple of months, uh, for the new board members. I don't know if you've heard, but Brett Thrasher, IT guy, has created the, I'll say Q R code, but it's something like that, that's gonna be in every door in the X student building. Uh, then, uh, I think Dr. Holman is meeting with, uh, Sheriff Garrett and maybe, uh, Chief Smith about the S R O's going around scanning the doors, making sure that's good as far as the safety check aspect, so, uh, but, uh, but we appreciate all of our S R O officers, and I know Mr. Canaster was here with Wilson earlier, so, uh, but they're continuing to work through that. Uh, then every couple of months, Ms. Jenny Smith, she has a safety, uh, meeting countywide. Uh, I think Mitch and maybe Wayne is on that safety committee, so if any of the new members want to be involved, just let us know, we can reach out to Jenny. Um, I know it's, uh, school personnel, Jenny, S R O officers, um, a lot of good things coming out of those meetings too, so.
One thing I would like to add is, I'll let this R O contract, I put the suggestions and concerns that you all had, and I submitted that to our attorney, and he has looked at the contract, and I've got a copy of that for the sheriff, and I gave him one because I see him today.
Can you make any thoughts on safety?
I wanted to ask, is there a full-time S R O officer at every school?
There, there is, but, um, for instance, the one at A H, we're in the process of getting a new one over there, they're, they're in training right now. And also, the one that at A H Roberts goes part-time, through the day, to Bridge Academy.
But other than that, it'll be school.
That's the only split one is to re-engage in each other, that's great.
Anything else? Well, Sheriff Garrett probably could be more specific, but I think if I'm saying this correctly, our county schools, the only time they go into that government would be if, uh, an officer would be off work or something, is that correct?
Correct, uh, but currently at Allen's Elementary, the S R O that is assigned there has had a lot of that issues. He's doing everything that he possibly can to get that. So what we do, or what we've been doing, is to have the problem, to do walkthroughs, things of that nature, until we can get that boy completely complete. So there, there is an issue there with Allen's, uh, and hopefully, hopefully, uh, we can get that resolved soon. I thought I had a young man hired to fill that position, but after much consideration, pointing him and his family, uh, he decided that, uh, over the county would not be the proper fit.
Sheriff, if you would, because not everybody knows, uh, just when you're regular deputies, and I say that's not the proper term, uh, the deputy that does road patrol, uh, they aren't necessarily trained for school resource, correct? So they can't just be termed one of the...
Correct, they, they can provide security measures and they do, but as far as being a well-rounded school resource officer, no, they do not have that training. Our school resource officers probably attend more training every year than our SWAT officers do. So there's a lot of confidence, a lot of trainings, so there, there's a lot that goes into being an S R O, a school resource officer versus just a basic patrol. It's a, and it's not like you can just go put an apple off the tree and go with the barrel and it's gonna be fine. And I'm like, when we were young and aspiring officers, uh, then, uh, the interest in people working in law enforcement is just not out there like it once was. So it's, uh, we're having to train a lot of others, and it takes time, you're looking six months for that to hire, for that to hire, that time you get finished rather, so.
I didn't mention the Allen situation, because I was under the impression that Jim was in the process, was probably going to be coming back, so.
He, he is back to work, but he is not at full capacity to be in that role.
Not yet.
But yes, we, he, he's getting there, he's getting there, he's, he's, he's in the therapy stage of, of his, uh, he's, he's in the therapy stage, he's just treated, so. But, any questions?
When an officer's not there, who will go to make sure the doors are secure?
The, the administration could have someone else in line to do that, it could be a variety of people.
On a day off, if there's a day off in the county school?
Yeah, well, I think what she was saying is, if, at least if the S R O is not there, who would go around and check all the doors? Uh, the administration could either do it or have someone else to go around and do it, one or two.
I just don't think that we realize how important this is. Uh, in this day and time, when I was principal, safety was not right up there at the top anymore. We watched TV, it's not what happened in Texas, it's at the top.
And that kind of is the, my concern to be discussed prior to this, about the doors having alarms on them, because I, I don't know how long it takes for you to make the circuit, for instance, Livingston Academy, uh, to, to check all the doors, but if it's thirty minutes, a lot of things can happen within that thirty minutes. If another student props that door open to let a friend in, uh, whether it be a, a friend or foe, the fact is, if the alarm is on there, that's constant. So that's, as we move forward, uh, with renovations and updates, I think, I think that exterior doors that are not, uh, directly visible at all times, we need to be considering doing door alarms, that if they're left in jar for so many seconds, then, then it would alert someone, that that door needs to be, to have some attention to it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff Garrett.
Yep, uh, do I need to get that tonight, or do you want us to wing that one? All right, y'all have got it.
Thank you.
All right, item number two, building program school visits, uh, last Tuesday, we visited Rickman and Wilson, so we've got their list, uh, and got their wish list to go from, uh, the next one is the nineteenth, I think that's next Monday. Uh, we'll start at Allen's at five o'clock, if that's good with everybody. Uh, then once we leave Allen's, we'll go across to Hillman and move at that one. Uh, after that, then, uh, I'll let everybody know the following date after the nineteenth, we get those. Everybody's welcome to meet us there at five o'clock, and walk through, the principals usually have their wish list and go around and show us their concerns and, uh, you know, let me look at some concerns, and some of them's quite interesting that we actually see once you're there, so, uh, so the nineteenth is our next. Uh, then the football stadium update, so I talked to Kevin, uh, today, he's the supervisor of Midstate, uh, bleachers. Uh, if you've not went by and looked, I recommend you drive by there, I got a picture on my phone, I stopped a few minutes ago and took it. Uh, they've got the last section of the, uh, reserve seating going in today. Uh, this afternoon or in the morning, Kevin said bleachers will be fully complete done. Uh, he has, I think tomorrow afternoon, uh, Christian Manziel with the city coming over, uh, to do the final inspection before he rots it off for us to play Friday night, uh, over there, so just remember lots, scoreboard bleachers, that's phase one. Uh, they do have the asphalt around, uh, the entire track to eliminate all the mud everywhere, so that's good. Uh, that's just the first layer of the asphalt. Uh, Kevin said, once we get later on in the year and the concession stands done, they're gonna put the top coating of asphalt on. He didn't want to put that on now, and people still going in and out working and tearing it up. Uh, but the concession stand, they're actually going up now on the second level, uh, which is going to be the weight room. Uh, but, um, tested the lots today, all those worked, the colors worked, Nevco was there today, met with Mike Johnson, uh, did training on the video board, uh, got everything, made sure everything's working on the scoreboard. Uh, so just hopefully tomorrow, when we get those bleachers, the final reserve done, uh, we'll be ready to go Friday night and start looking to phase two to be done, so. And they got portable restrooms, it's already there, uh, it'll be there since the concession, restrooms is not done, there's supposed to be like ten hand washing stations there as well, uh, so there shouldn't be any issues. Uh, the last meeting we had at the high school, uh, they did talk about when the, uh, visitors, well, visitors, when the crowd comes in, they're gonna continue to come in like they used to, go down the steps. Uh, they'll probably have that concession area, uh, blocked off, because they're still doing work there. All the traffic will be going around by the new visitor bleachers around by the fieldhouse and that way, so nobody's up there messing around where there's still land block and doing stuff, uh, up in that area. But we talked to Mr. Melton, they're gonna have the temporary concession stand set up down next to the fieldhouse on that end. Everybody's gonna be walking numb that way anyway, so, sounds like all the plans and everything's in place, so hopefully everything will go, go good Friday night for the first home game. I do know they've got some big plans over there, starting at five-thirty, Wood of the World's gonna have a large American flag, takes up like half the field, uh, for the national anthem. Uh, I think Tom Davis's sister's gonna be there to kind of, uh, rededicate the Tom Davis Memorial Stadium. Uh, I did, uh, send an email to the architects to ask them if they could come up with a plaque, kind of like we saw at Grapevine when they do the new, um, building programs that you showed me, to do a plaque, it's got Specialist Tom Davis and got, um, uh, if you go into the new county services building, they've got a bust of him... uh, if you go into the new county services building, they've got a bust of him there with the verbiage. So I took a picture of that. Uh, so when that comes in, they're gonna give us a quote on it. We can use our contingency funds to do that. And I think putting that by the ticket booth or the concession stand to show that, you know, that's Tom Davis Memorial Stadium. So, uh, but everything's coming along pretty good, so.
Some of that, some all that he said up. This is my summary of it. Today, the maintenance supervisor asked him, he said, we're good.
All right, that's, uh, anybody got anything else?
I'd like for us, I don't know how we can do it or if we ever can do it. I'd like to consider something, I'll begin our bus drivers. The entry like we give our parent professionals. I know they're part-time, most of them are. But I'd like to check around maybe some other systems and see what they do or if, if that's a possibility, we can do that in the future.
I'll get with Sheri, I'll do it too. I know I talked to Sheri once, but I've been putting, can we have an outside, yeah, company to come in and offer it? And I think for their under thirty hours a week that we can't do the state insurance. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So we'll talk to Sheri again. Anybody else got anything? All right, if not, the new, new ones welcome. Hopefully it wasn't boiling in the night, so, um, be ready to go next. Philip, thank you for coming. County commission, appreciate it. Appreciate what you do. All right, that's it. Thanks.
But everybody hold one second. So if you went to the, I didn't wanna sneak in.